Item meeting to order.
Gary.
Here.
Zach.
Here.
Ruth.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, acknowledgment of Grady County Assessor's letter of resignation to take effect January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. There it is again. Oh. Got to shut it off. Okay. Uh, January seventh, twenty twenty-five. To whom it may concern, I, Barry Firestone, Grady County Assessor, have decided to give my resignation effective February first. I have thirty years and six months with Grady County, and I have decided to retire. I have enjoyed my time in serving the citizens of Grady County. I am suggesting my first deputy Cindy Gilner fill the position of Assessor on February first. She has been shadowing me for years and will do an excellent job. Thank you, Barry Firestone, Grady County Assessor.
Congratulations, huh?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good luck on your next chapter.
Okay. Item number four, the board will discuss if possible, take action to appoint a replacement to complete present term of office of the Assessor for Grady County, thereby filling the vacancy caused by February one, twenty twenty-five resignation of the current Assessor. The new Assessor will be formally sworn in thereafter.
I make a motion that Cindy Gilner take be come the new county Assessor for Grady County.
Thank you.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Item number five, swearing in of the newly appointed Assessor by Judge Young for an effective date of February one, twenty twenty-five.
Last chance to break out.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, we'll use your legal name for purposes of our, of our, oh, how about that? All right. Raise your right hand for me. Repeat after me. I, Cynthia Gilner.
I, Cynthia Gilner.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That I have not been paid.
That I have not been paid.
Or contributed either directly or indirectly.
Or have contributed either directly or indirectly.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
To procure the nomination or election.
To procure the nomination or collection.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not.
That I have not.
Knowingly violated any election law of the state.
Knowingly violated any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done by others on my behalf.
Or procured it to be done by others on my behalf.
That I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear or affirm.
And I further swear or affirm.
That I will not receive.
That I will not receive.
Use or travel.
Use or travel.
Upon any free pass or free transportation.
Upon any free pass or free transportation.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
Congratulations. Cynthia, why don't you go ahead and sign your address here? All right. Now we have a son, an Assessor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. No, congratulations.
We'll clear out now.
Okay, uh, this time we're going to go to item number seventeen. Item number seventeen, discussion and possible action on opening and awarding a bid for custom-built AR-15 rifles to Grady County Sheriff's Office. Cops getting shot. Total bid, two thir- two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Yeah, stamped and signed. This bid will be tactical guns and ammo in here. Signed and sealed. This amount will be for two hundred, three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. This bid. Be for. Fifty signs of liberty gun marks.
Valuer.
Valuer.
Valuer Defense.
Uh, Valuer Defense Depot. And it is. Shirt signed and sealed. Signed and sealed. The total bid on this is one hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
What I would really like to do, because I, I think I'm going to have some questions, but I want to research a little bit before I start asking questions. Um, I'd really like to table, table the bids for the time being.
I was willing to ask you to do that anyway. Make sure that all the good specs boxes are checked off.
That's, I have some questions because there's a couple, there's discrepancies there, so.
Is it on the bike to the lower?
Um, there was some suppressor, uh, there was something with the suppressors that I'd like to look into a little bit more. And then, uh, uh, there's something else in that paragraph, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but I'd like to just take, take a week to make my questions. That way I'm not trying to come up with questions here in front of a bunch of people who'll get at me.
Uh, and, and the specs need to be reviewed by he who wrote the specs to make sure that the box, boxes are checked.
And I think I'm going to have some questions for the DA's office on it too, so. So that's my motion, I'll make a motion to table it for the next one.
I'll say.
Gary.
Here.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Charles.
Grady Memorial.
Okay. Okay, go back to item number five, uh, or item number six. Discussion and possible approval from January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll make the motions approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven.
Morning, Sidney.
Sidney.
Thanks, Sidney.
Gary, do you want a copy of this as well?
Yes.
Four copies.
Yes.
Okay. I'll be there.
Okay. Discussion and possible action in force for the Emergency Management Director, Grady County Fire Department, Safety Director, and Construction Superintendent, Dale.
Uh, this week we got a state training committee, uh, meeting Friday afternoon, uh, or Friday morning into afternoon. Other than that, we're going to have a good chance of rain starting tomorrow evening, as early as tomorrow evening, we'll let it through, uh, Friday morning, so. Could get one to two inches of rain, which is a little abnormal for this time of year, but we'll take what we can get. But, uh, temperatures look good, so we don't see anything until after the first of February, second week of February, we might have some colder weather coming in again, but until then, right around normal temperature slightly above, so we're good.
Okay. Kim?
Um, we did have to cancel our CPR class Saturday morning due to sickness and, uh, you know, I mean, you know, working on those dummies and stuff, that's, that's not cool with the germs and such, so we did cancel that. Also, I think we had about seventeen people signed up for the purchasing class tomorrow. Um, I asked Sidney to put us in an extra five for the people who will just show up at the last minute at that last meeting, at the last training. I think that's all I have going on.
Okay. Bobby?
Um, this morning I did conduct a safety briefing with the emergency management in Kennedy. Uh, I'll also be doing our monthly, uh, facility walkthrough and fire extinguisher inspection later this week. Uh, additionally, I will perform the monthly fuel leak tank inspection across all three county barns. Also be, uh, facilitating a new higher safety orientation for a couple of employees in District Two. Uh, this orientation is, is mandated, uh, so, uh, if you guys have new, and I bring this across the board every year, if you guys have new employees that you want me to do a safety orientation with, if you agree to call on me, if not, you can go ahead and have somebody at your barn do that. Uh, I do request that you do document it just for, uh, legally purposes, if we ever get audited or whatever happens. Um, I also, um, have started working on the Oklahoma Statistical Survey on the Occupation of Injuries and Illness for submission for the Department of Labor for the twenty-twenty-four calendar year. Uh, this is something also that's mandatory that we do every year, so, uh, I'll be starting on that this week also. That's all I have for you guys.
I'll be, uh, on, uh, I've got like three workforce employees, new, been there a couple weeks or so.
I think with the workforce, um, I think they might have their own insurance and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, let me check on that, um, and I'll check with Kevin too on that.
Okay. I didn't know.
But if it is, we, we can, we can schedule something and get them, uh, do an orientation with them.
Okay.
Unless, uh...
Okay. Thank you.
And our purchasing class is nine-thirty in the morning.
Yeah, there's three different ones, yeah. There's one at nine-thirty and twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Just good for them.
Yeah. And we've had good feedback, so that's, that's good.
Because we don't have, we don't have a mic this morning.
No, Mike is out, he's got some family sickness, so, he's got, Tommy texted me this morning and said he's got very blind out, so.
Okay, go to item number eight, public comments. Nobody's signed up.
No, I know I'm not public enough, but I want to recognize a couple of people.
Okay.
So I've got Mr. Bill Flores here, he's in leadership chickishay, he's also involved with Perpik Dwellings, which is a, a group that's trying to build some homeless shelters here in town and, and work with the homeless to get them back on their feet. And, uh, so Mr. Flores is here and he just got back from California, he worked some of the wildfires. And then I want to recognize, I didn't recognize my two guys last week that came, but I had the Jones boys came last week, I've got JR and Justin back there. I'm really, uh, into wanting my guys to be educated, I want them to come and see how these meetings go, what we do, they may be our next county commissioners, so we want to make sure that they know what's going on. Probably not JR.
Glad you guys are here. Okay. Item number nine, new business. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act Title Twenty-five, open statute three-eleven, eighty-nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda. Anyone have any new business?
I do. Uh, we need to look at probably a new x-ray machine, open security. We were, well, Friday we contacted because there's, the screen's flipping out, so it's going to cost about five thousand dollars for them to just come here and, and analyze it. I think if we look at, this one was in twenty-seventeen?
This machine was a twenty-seventeen and we bought it in twenty-eighteen, and it'd be twenty-two hundred dollars for them just to come down and analyze it, period, to tell us yes or no whether they would put it, put us on a contract for a maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
That doesn't include any parts, labor, nothing like that.
So I think if we need to look at probably getting a new one, we're up there, since there's so many people comes through and things utilized all the time, um, and what we can do is, I mean, we'll have to offer a bid because they're expensive, they're very expensive.
I was going to say Sidney might be able to tell us if they're on state contract or anything like that.
And that's what we'll be able to do.
We've got to call that guy back today.
But they're, if the company's on state contract, but we're trying to get just kind of ballpark figure on what it's going to cost the county for one of these machines, so, uh, like, like I said, something like that, we don't need to keep putting Band-Aids on, we need to get it done right, so.
It'll probably be four to six months out, he said, if we did a new one, we might have to go ahead and just buy the bullet, have them come down and tell us what it's going to cost them to fix that screen, so that screen doesn't blink off when they're running stuff through.
Makes ours.
Twenty-two hundred, if we wanted to set it up on a maintenance for where they come
once a year and stuff.
Oh, okay.
It's just twenty-two hundred dollars because the machine is so old, for them just to come down and analyze it and say whether or not they would do that.
Yeah. Just to get them to drop down here.
So, no, I don't know what it would cost in order to...
I mean, we're going to have to do that anyway to start with, because we have to have a bid, we can't keep it pulling out.
But that would just be hard and like, so...
Are they a sole source of the x-ray machine?
That's the one that we've been using since it came into...
Well, Tom said that him and Rex, the one that did do it, they don't or whatever, and they found these on the internet, this Smith and something on the internet. So I'm sure this motherfucker.
Yeah, I would think it's many different, there's got to be some different people.
But the people we did use, I don't know, something's happened to them though, and they're out of contract, like, has been. The hired sheriff did one of them, but...
Okay. Y'all have any opinions?
We got none.
Ruth?
Nope.
Okay. Item number ten, discussion and possible approval with the following draw requests from the Grady Memorial Hospital's sales tax accounts held within, held with First National Bank. Uh, Care Fusion Solutions, a hundred and nine thousand, Pixis Medication Dispensing System, upgrade partial industry system, LLC, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen and fifty, computer laptop, mental health, NP striker sales, LLC, fourteen thousand, three hundred and ten, forty-three, defibrillator, Life Pack fifteen, emergency department, training brand, US Incorporated, six thousand, three seventy-nine, fourteen, pump, low pressure, chiller number two, Uline, two thousand, nine, nine hundred and forty dollars, eighty-three cents, filing cabinet group, Noble, Noble Co. Incorporated, twenty-five thousand, nine thirty-two eighty, doors, automatic, two of them, loading dock, north entry, inch north entrance. That's the twenty-five thousand, nine thirty-two eighty, is that correct? Yeah, okay. Make a motion to approve?
I'll say.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Okay, item number... Okay, item eleven, discussion and possible action on recommendation qualifications for a new Grady Memorial Hospital seating code.
So I had a call Thursday night from the Chairman of the Board. at the hospital and they really want us to put some input in on that. And I told him that really we don't have an idea. I have a very good friend that's been in the medical field all along, is an owner of several businesses. He speaks to medical, that medical information and so forth. I don't know if you got, if you can get with him and see if he can give us some ideas. The chairman just wanted us to be aware, you know, that there are things that we want to see qualities in that CEO thing, what we're gonna see. So that, by that's reason, I'm watching that code. If it's okay with you guys, I'll, I'll talk to my friend and see if he can help me work out a few things. What we would like to see is commissioners, but if not, you know.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I don't know that it's really our position that they re-trust and.
Me, me neither, but they just, they felt like they wanted to have the commissioners involved because we do oftentimes give them other monies, what we would like to see. So that's, I kinda, I originally got a phone call about that and I was like, I don't know that we need to do that. But then the chairman, who's also my banker, called the other day and said, we would really like y'all to be involved in this. So, then whatever the board decides, I'm good. I mean, I just want somebody who's got some financial knowledge and gets along with all those employees out there.
Right.
You know, but I, I know it's more in depth than that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more to it than you really know.
Yeah.
I don't know nothing about running a hospital, so I don't.
Yeah, that's, that's me. I mean, I just happened to see my friend at church yesterday and said something to him. He said, if you, if you want to come ask me some questions, I'd be delighted.
I think that's why we're gonna deal with it. I mean, I'd be glad to talk to anybody.
Yeah.
They want, feel free to call me, um, or we'll be talking about it.
No, that's kinda where I was at, so I may visit with him and just see him and come back to the board and see what recommendations he makes. But, I mean, I'm like Zach, we really don't, we don't control that, but they just wanted some, they really want the board to be involved.
I think they just need to feel free to know that if they, I'm gonna talk to this, if they give us call with concerning that or whatever.
Then I'll, I'll visit, I'll visit with my friend and just see what, what he's seen in the past. I mean, he's worked in different hospitals and done different things like that, so.
Totally.
You know.
Okay.
That's, that's where that came from.
Okay.
Just take no action.
This is no action. Okay, item number twelve, discussion of possible action on having Debbie DeSilva and Catherine Terry research county records to get an accurate list of officials of Grady County from state through state.
That'd be me. I'm Debbie DeSilva, this is my daughter-in-law Catherine Terry.
Okay.
We're just here to introduce ourselves this morning to a friend of ours, um, told me a few months ago uh, that Jill had a research project that she had conducted, going back to the records, the history of her office and compiled them. And so I got in contact with her and she had talked about, uh, a possibility of the commissioners wanting to go back through all the offices, go back through the records, research the history and compile that. And so I brought a packet for you guys just to tell you a little bit about my history. It's, uh, just kind of a summary, but I'm a journalist and let's see, about fifteen years ago, it seemed, it didn't seem like it's been that long ago, but I was editor over at the Express and R and Dell is the only one I recognize that I worked with from back then. But worked with him on lots of different articles and things, so he can hopefully maybe vouch for the accuracy of my research and articles. But anyhow, so, uh, so the primary, uh, task would be research, which is something that she and I do. I'm kind of semi-retired now, and so I brought in my daughter-in-law and it gives me an opportunity to kinda bring her up through the ropes and so, when did my son marry her? I didn't know she was a writer and a researcher and everything that I did too, so, so that was kind of a nice blessing for me. But anyhow, so we, we do a current little newsletter called Highway Eighty-One Landmark. I put some samples, top five of the last issues in there. And, uh, just goes up and down Highway Eighty-One between here and down there. We try, in the beginning, we tried to go a little bit further, but, uh, just being kind of new to startup and kind of pull back a little bit. So we, we still do between Chickasha and Duncan, but it's just a sample of my writing or this. It's a fun little newsletter actually that has caught on around town and so. And I have, uh, you can see on my, I call it a career summary, so it's not really a resume, but you can see that I've done a lot of research projects. I'm actually a third generation journalist in, so I have won awards with Oklahoma Press Association and then different associations. But, uh, I've tackled a lot of different projects through the years. As you can see, I've, I've been doing this for over forty-five years now, actually, so. I've tackled all kinds of confidential projects, um, dealing with state issues, uh, county. And I really just kinda wanna introduce ourselves. So we have posted Jill, I've kinda talked to her a few times, found that we, we would work on it maybe fifteen hours a week as a team. You know, like me and you from one to four, Monday through Friday. Other than, uh, and I could keep her posted, like we have a week's vacation planned in March, but so there might be a few exceptions. We just start working together about fifteen hours a week. And normally for freelance work, I've always received somewhere, give or take, in a range of about twenty dollars an hour. Jill thinks maybe might not take us any longer than a couple of months or, you know. We're just flexible and appreciate y'all's time, but.
So, so you research all the county offices, the people that, the elected officials through that time period? How far back do you go?
Well, I guess the state. We're kinda relying on Jill for guidance because she did do this project for her.
And did the county clerks.
She did, she did county clerks and so. It took me about a year to do mine, but I don't have the time to really say do it all, so it took a while, but. Anyway, we felt like all the official, we're gonna do it, and mine is gonna do all of them. We don't have a really, I've had people come and ask me the list before, we don't have a really good list of when they were in office. So we'd like for all the officials and the judges to be.
I would have a problem with that. I mean, I, I wouldn't do that. I do too. I, I do too.
Make a motion since Sidney?
My second.
Gary?
Thank you very much.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Cause we can start like as soon as you want, next week, whatever.
All right, all right.
All right, thank you.
And it's twenty dollars an hour, you say?
Yes.
Okay, we're on item thirteen. Discussion of possible action on the presentation of Mark likes Camino, Camino on oil and gas results.
Good morning. Uh, this item, uh, had been presented to the board, uh, last year a couple of times and tabled and then put, you know, set off for this year. Um, at that time, there was one section, uh, that would show, uh, the county ownership of minerals. Since that time, two additional sections, uh, have been researched and there's a total of three sections, a little over fourteen acres of net mineral interest owned by the county. Um, what we're proposing is to, um, it'll have to be advertised for a week. Open bidding or you can do sealed bids. Uh, open bidding, you know, always, especially if you have two or more, you get a little bit more money. Since there's three sections, it'll, it'll need to be three different, uh, advertisements, three different oil and gas leases. And that's our, that's our proposal. To go ahead and advertise, uh, at the end of that week, then, uh, probably at the end of the board meeting. Uh, that way it's not interrupting the, uh, agenda items. We can be the last agenda item and whoever shows up would bid on those sections, bonus, uh, royalty and term of the lease.
So what is our advantage to letting Camino do this for us?
Um, we've done it before. It's just a matter of getting the, um, we're gonna be one of the bidders. We're the, we're the.
That's, that's what I'm asking, is that not a conflict of interest that you would be bidding and then other people would be bidding and you'd be?
Not really, because, I mean, you know, we, you go in with a certain amount you wanna offer for royalty and, and bonus. Say it's a hundred dollars and three sixteenths. Somebody, you know, may wanna bid two hundred and three sixteenths. Then you've got another person, you know, just goes up and it increases the monies coming into the county.
Is there existing wells on these properties right now?
Uh, I don't believe there are. What they are, it's in, it's in the city limits. They're city lots, which include alleys, street.
And all the properties are vacant?
Oh, they're. Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're vacant lots, yeah.
There aren't most of them over there by the railroad tracks?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I apologize, I.
No, that's okay. I'm, I'm asking these questions because my husband's been looking at this.
Okay.
He's had, has some, a little bit of interest, uh, interest in some wells somewhere else, so, um, I, I, that was my, my wondering, why Camino would want to go through all this and advertise everything for us?
Nobody would.
Okay.
They, they would actually just continue to sit there. Um, of course, Camino, it did the research, um, and they'll wanna, you know, if they, they wanna drill. Not in the city limits, but it'll be, you know, probably a two-mile lateral.
Yeah.
Or horizontal as well, so, um, that's the only reason we're bringing it to. Uh, we did the title research, uh, we're bringing it to the board. We may or may not win the bid and that's the chance you take. But it just benefits the county.
Right.
Uh, with bonus monies and then monthly income from the, uh, royalty of the wells.
So your process on the auctioning is you advertise it, people show up here, they do the bidding?
Right. Now, the county will have to advertise, but whoever does the winning bid pays for the advertising.
Now, Camino speaks to, uh, water drilling right out here southeast.
Right.
That I'm aware of.
They have actually two rigs running right now in, in Grady.
Yeah.
I don't understand it enough. I have some nieces in the oil business that have worked all over the United States and I would like to table this so that I can contact one of my nieces and see if this is a, is a normal procedure.
Either that or, and it, feel free to that, but we, we've also done it in Blaine County, if you would like to contact them.
That, that's, for me, I'll go with whatever you guys want. For me, I need, I need a little more information.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just tabling?
Okay, for.
And Ruth, that which one do you?
Next week.
Yeah, that's your motion?
Yes.
For how long?
Table it for a week.
Okay, thank you.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item fourteen, discussion of possible action on the table item for the charity account and setting parameters for helping the homeless with food and water during extreme weather conditions.
Okay, I talked to Life Skills, I talked to Gloria Bowles. And for them to do an overnight shelter, it has to be twenty-five degrees or below. So we took them some soup and water. That's all they wanted was canned soup and water. So we took them some. They said they only had like six or eight that showed up to spend the night. So I feel like we've got them set for a little bit. Soup kitchen never got back to us about really what they, they wanted the lady from the community alliance to get ahold of Kim. Um, she never did. I talked to Steve Taylor yesterday and he said what they do is they usually figure it's gonna be thirty-two degrees or less during the day, then they'll open a day shelter. They didn't have any of their perimeters for the summer yet, so we really haven't taken anything to the, to the soup kitchen. Uh, if they call today, I'm gonna go in and let Kim go get them. Steve told her that usually they want some coffee and some snacks, cookies, or the individual, like little Debbie's or vanilla bars or something. So if they go on and call today, I'm gonna go in and let Kim get them something. But they're supposed to contact Kim. Somebody from Heidi's Homeless contacted Kim. I did not go to Heidi's. But Mr. Taylor did tell me that she's a five oh one, three C or whatever the, uh, that they're, so she's gone through everything. But they, she told Kim they fixed a crock pot full of soup and they had one person show up. So the, uh, the soup kitchen had some extra people show up, not a whole lot. Like I said, they just want coffee and some snacks. And he said what they'll do is they'll keep that away from their normal food and everything, so it's just for the day shelter. So I think that we need to go, to go on and approve that we do this, the hundred dollars a day. If, as needed, I don't think we should go spend like five hundred dollars if they don't need it.
Yeah.
You know, cause there's, there's other things we can be doing, um, based on these temperatures why it's cold. And normally the soup kitchen will put theirs on Facebook and I have went on and accepted them on Facebook so that we know when they are over and then watch the temperature. Uh, I can talk to Gloria Bowles. And, but they, they were really, they were like, just soup and water, because she said when they get there in the evenings, they clock in, I think. Bill, Bill, you may know more.
I used to work for LSI and, and I'm the co-chair for the community alliance, so.
Okay, good, okay. We've got the man here that can help us. Didn't even know it, Bill.
But yeah, so Zach sent me a message this morning, said they'll do it tonight from eight PM to eight AM. They have a room separate, uh, a wing, separate where people can sleep and, and there's just sleep. They don't have to comply with the, they have to comply with rules, but not, they're not there long-term. And then we have a three-month agreement with the soup kitchen as a trial.
Okay.
To see how this works for the cold weather and then maybe we can foster them when it's like a hundred five hours, whatever they decide, or the alliance.
So will you be our contact on that?
I think yes, ma'am.
Okay, give Kim some information in there, Bill. And that way we kinda have an idea of when we need to do something. And then I was also told the soup kitchen is going to try, try to start opening on Saturdays.
I haven't heard that, but that'd be a plus.
Yeah.
A plus, and the reality is, we live in America and people have a choice. And we want to help and sometimes many don't go into those places because of restrictions, for whatever reason, that's fine. But we help where we can and I would, you, you all run the money, but I would little by little put that in there, you know, as you see the need. That's just my thoughts, because Life Skills and LSI and Res House have a good kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have a lot of excess donated water that's actually in the way and some juice and stuff, so we'll get it out this week. We'll take the LSI and the soup kitchen, we'll just kinda split it with them. That way, uh, they have what they, some of what they need, you know, but we have a lot that has been donated, so. In the summertime, I usually get three or four pallets of water. So when we do that, we can also, cause all my deputies are required to carry a case of water with them at all times. So, I mean, and even doing that, we still have excess, so we can help out there too and get it donated out.
Okay, well, I, I, I think we need to go with this and then wait till Bill and then provide us with the, um, summer temperatures and stuff, but, um.
I like, my opinion is just Life Skills and Soup Kitchen, without getting into too much of my opinions, but.
Yeah, and I just, and like I said, and I, they called, I did not go talk to him. I did not think about him. And I have to look and base it on the numbers. I mean, if somebody tells me one person. I mean, if somebody tells me one person comes in to eat, I might can go buy you a case of soup for you just to do that, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna buy up a bunch. Soup Kitchen does a great job and they have volunteers that come in and feed every day. So they, they're not gonna take any more than what they need. I don't believe Life Skills were, I was gonna buy big cans, she said no, they just limited to the smaller cans. And I don't know, you know, if they let that, let them take it with them, I don't know.
They do.
But, okay.
It's transportable in their little backpack.
Okay, so, um, but, uh, that's kinda where I was at, cause I didn't realize that she had that. But she doesn't have a commercial kitchen?
Who?
Heidi?
No, I've, no.
I've been in there.
Okay, okay, so Life Skills in the Soup Kitchen have a commercial kitchen and that's what we're going to.
I just, I just restricted it to them.
Okay.
Yes, I agree with that.
Bill, what's your last name again?
It's Flores, or F L O R E S.
I think a suggestion.
Yes.
Does we write these parameters up and maybe send them to the two entities?
Yeah.
With anything written?
No, that's a good idea.
If we could present it to the community alliance, that's very robust. And we meet once a month and we're just here to help augment, uh, the county and the city with help.
That's good, we'll just, we'll get Bill's contact.
So you wanna table this until next week and then we can get something written out?
That'd be fun.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item fifteen, discussion of possible action on setting qualification guidelines for an employee to receive a phone allowance.
Since I'm new, I don't know, but I've started, everyone under my umbrella are using the time clock. Some of the people under my umbrella have the app on their phone, some people don't. But I don't wanna pay everybody seventy dollars a month to have the app on their phone. So there are time clocks. I just wanna know how we determine who gets a phone allowance and who does not. Do we have any of those guidelines?
What I do in my, in my bar is if they try to pick up home, they get a phone allowance. That's what I do in mine, cause most of those guys are all on call.
Okay.
Um, point four seven, so, uh.
So somebody that's twenty-four hour, they're gonna get the phone allowance?
That's, that's.
Okay, okay, um. Cause you know, we discussed, the county can get phones for thirty-nine dollars, we're paying some people fifty, we're paying some people seventy. How do we determine, have we looked at their phone bill? How do we know we're not paying their whole phone bill? That's what I'm asking, that's it. I'm gonna say, y'all are gonna get tired of hearing this. Every, every dollar we spend, no matter where we get it from, no matter how we get it, it's taxpayers' dollars. People are paying that.
Right.
There's some people that cannot afford to go out and buy a phone for seventy dollars. Of course, some of them get them free, but there's some people that have to watch every penny they have.
Right.
And I just think that we need to be more, more of a steward of that money. And so that's kinda where I'm at. I, I need to know, you know, who gets a phone and then do we give everybody the same amount?
Okay. Everybody knows.
But, but I'm not willing to pay everybody for a phone just cause they don't have an app on their phone to clock in, because we have time clocks everywhere.
Yeah.
So y'all didn't know that, but that's something would y'all put me over the courthouse in the different areas. I, I want everybody to use the, um, the time clock.
I agree with that.
Uh, that's something, talking to.
Especially with the, with the way that our accrual process works on our vacation, it just makes it where the time clock does it for you and you don't have to.
Right. Yeah. So I, I told someone, no, that I would not let them have it on their phone, cause I wouldn't go pay the seventy dollars a month to have it on their phone, so.
Wouldn't go pay them seventy?
I wouldn't go pay them the seventy a month to have, have it on their phone.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, supervisors, anybody that's twenty-four hour already, anybody, they can have it. I just think we have a lot of time clocks around that, so that's going off a whole, a whole different tangent.
Oh, whatever, so, you wanna agree on a limit?
That.
A dollar amount that you pay per phone?
Well, I think, we need to, the guidelines are one, so if they have a pickup or their twenty-four hour call, then they get, they get a phone allowance. Well, that's the next one, I think, Gary. That's item, that's the next item. I just wanted to know how I decide who gets a phone. Okay, so I make a motion to accept that if you have a pickup or your twenty-four hour call, that's how you get a cell phone. That's how you get a cell phone allowance.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Okay. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action on a tabled item for setting a standard amount for phone allowance for Grady County employees that receive the phone allowance.
Can I give you an idea?
Yeah.
What about contact the phone companies and see what the government rates are? Cause that's what I pay.
Yeah.
It's government rates and, I mean, county government, so. And I tell you, they're all gonna be about the same.
What is the government rate?
Thirty-nine ninety-nine a month. So forty dollars, that's what it is. And I've checked with AT&T, cause we've looked at AT&T, we've looked at, of course, we're with Horizon.
Yeah.
So we, we've looked at some of them, yeah, they're all about the same.
So you mean the individuals find out if they can get a government rate on their phone, the ones that don't want to give up their phones?
I mean, if they want to, uh, but when I'm, when I'm shooting for a jaw, this is what government rate is. That as far as phone allowance, uh, is forty bucks. And that, cause like I said, that's what we pay for our phones.
And, and, and that's kinda like I said, I have my sounding board at home, so I've been over this with him, cause he has lived with me for forty-some odd years and knows how to pick you up. And that's, and, and in his mind, he said, I think if you can get a government phone for forty bucks, then that's what your reimbursement is.
I think with Verizon, we just get a bill and I pay it everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just. I think if we do that, we should do it.
From here now.
Whoever's still getting the seventy or whatever, get the seventy and then from here on, whoever.
Gets the government rate.
Cause I think when I was at the sheriff's office the first time, I think I got a hundred dollars a month for a phone allowance.
That's before we started going, yeah, they were like a hundred bucks a month and.
Quite positive, I got a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
And then I said when we started.
Well, that was way back, I've been pointing, so that was way back when.
When, when I first went to work with, for art, it was twenty dollars, or a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah. Yeah, there wasn't, Horizon wasn't in the picture as far as.
And I think back then they didn't have unlimited stuff too.
Right, you would have the app on and stuff.
And all of that stuff, so. Yeah.
And now old enough to get their own phone and we just pay bill. So grandfather now, so the rates are gonna stay where they're at, whoever's got, cause most of my guys have fifty. That's the reason I brought it up, cause I saw some that had seventy. So the rates are gonna stay where they're at. Anybody new will only be allowed the governmental rate.
I'm following up.
Yeah, me too.
I just wanna go start pulling money away from people.
Yeah, right, right. Now, will that government rate depend on whether or not they sign a contract with Verizon or AT&T?
No, it's just a government rate, it doesn't matter.
I think we're gonna return, Gary, to tell us if the government rate goes up, cause you guys got a bunch of phones.
Oh, yeah.
Are you saying, Ruth, so, you know?
Yeah, she lets me know if the bill goes up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so will we do it on that?
Do we make a motion? We'll make a motion on that?
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to set the, set the phone allowance at the government rate, starting now and grandfather, everybody else here. It's already got one.
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right.
The water rate still stays the same.
Your, your rate would stay the same, it'll just be, anybody new that's higher would, um, be different.
Yeah. And I can contact the phone company if y'all want to and get you what the government rate is set at, y'all.
I bet they're all the same.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking if you're paying forty bucks, that's what everybody's is. Uh, we're gonna have Sydney check on some phones for some areas that if somebody wants to get the second phone, and I know it's a hassle, um.
Yes, I know.
Yeah. It should always also tell me how important it is too, so.
Yes.
I'm not really interested to have my phone subpoenaed in court for something that I did, that's the only thing I, I don't like.
Yeah.
Item number eighteen, discussion of possible, possible approval of the declaration surplus of equipment in the fourth nineteen, according to statute three thirty-nine and four twenty-one, six four twenty-one point two, for sheriff's department. One thirteen Chevy Tahoe. Twenty twelve Chevy Tahoe.
And I think these are the ones on the next slide of what we're gonna make some.
Just these two?
Just those two.
Oh, right.
I'll make a motion to, I'll second.
Y'all gonna see some more of those coming up.
Two more on the next slide. Do it's a gift. Yes.
Yes.
Do it's a present over there.
It's what John wants me to do.
I know there's a lot more money into high mileage cars that we don't need too.
I put it on paper one time, it costs you more to drive, always another drive, they would.
It is, absolutely. Especially when you buy on stick contract.
Especially when you buy on stick contract.
Amber Police Department? Yeah, Amber Police Department is down to two vehicles that has no equipment, no license, just has their decals on them right now. So what I'm doing.
Cause you're stopping too many people.
So what I'm doing with these is I'm just stripping our decals and pulling radios and leaving everything else in there, so they can go, all they gotta do is put the radios in, decals on it, and they're ready to go, so. I mean, for a couple hundred bucks.
I think it's great that we did this with the smaller communities.
Okay, item nineteen, discussion of possible approval of disposal of equipment from sheriff's department in according to division set forth in Title nineteen, session four twenty-one.
Yeah, that's gonna be one for Amber, oh yeah, I'm sorry, Amber.
Oh, that, oh, yes, okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Please second.
So Ruth?
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes. All right, then, I'm gonna look into those two, cause I'm really concerned now, yeah.
I'll speak in.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And all those classes, not a, I've gotta go get a C T scan.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I've already been through it, plus any one, two seconds, see what.
Item twenty, discussion of possible approval of adding Benny Melvin as a receiving officer for the charity requisitioning department.
I put that on, Benny's one of my employees and he went with me the other day to get the water and the soup and he's familiar with going into Williams and buying stuff and signing the ticket and bringing it back. And I'd like to add him on, it would just make it easier, right now you're the only one that's on there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So I make a motion to add Benny on as receiving officer.
Okay.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 We will have an updated list next week. We'll have to update the list.
Oh, okay.
Positions because there is a certain change.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right, so, item twenty-one, discussion of possible approval of Grady County twenty twenty-five hazard communication plan.
This is a plan that we always, um, update and pretty much identifies hazards, chemicals, label systems. Uh, also, uh, some of the responsibilities of, of the office managers, um, keeping the S E S, um, updated at each location. Uh, training, um, employees about the chemical hazards, um, informing employees who do special tasks, informing contractors and other employees about the haz- of other hazardous chemicals and the pictograms and hazards. It's all included in the, uh, hazard communication plan and this goes out to every department. It's just an update on that.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 Twenty, item twenty-two, discussion of possible approval of Grady County twenty twenty-five disaster recovery plans.
This is also something that we update every year, make sure with every department that they updated their, if they have any new vendors or new point, employees, uh, they pretty much go through there and, uh, uh, scratch out the ones that are there, the ones that are not, the new vendors, and then I go up there to my office and update them and bring them for your guys to, uh, get them all approved. And so we've had a lot of changes, this kinda been one of the latest ones that we've gotten to you guys to get approved because of the changes that came, uh, with all, uh, different departments and offices, elected officials.
Do they have signatures on these?
They do not, there's some that is, that I was, uh, was doing, uh, the ones that I've turned into, uh, the auditor last year, uh, I had a tournament. I never got any reply from them whether they needed to be, uh, signed or not, and I went back to even the twenty seventeen before, when George was doing them. A lot of them did not have the, the signature, but it does have a column there where, uh, I put in, uh, the year that I, I updated them. Uh, who was the, uh, request, uh, elected official there and they requested it and put my name and the, and the year they got, uh, uh, them, the print, the time or the month and the date that it got printed.
Yeah, I think the only thing I've ever seen auditors want is to make sure that they're done in there in my office.
Right, and I give them a copy, um, and, um, yeah, so whatever, uh, if you want that next year, we can look forward with that too.
It'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 Item twenty-three, discussion of possible action to approve the utilization of the purchase card, purchase card for county purchasing class.
That's, that was for something that we were gonna need and we are no longer needing that, so.
So.
Yeah. We put it on there to cover us and we don't need it, so.
Okay.
So what, just kill it?
Okay.
I'll stand on that, we go. Okay, item twenty-four, discussion of possible approval of depositing a check from Haco in the amount of one thousand five hundred and five dollars into sheriff's service M and O account for repairs on unit twenty-three oh four.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 Item twenty-five, discussion of possible approval of depositing a check from Haco in the amount of five thousand two hundred and five dollars forty-eight cents to the sheriff's service M and O account for repairs on unit twenty-three oh five. to the sheriff's service M and O account for repairs on unit twenty-three oh five.
I'll second that.
Gary?
Yes.
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 Item twenty-six, discussion and possible proof of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, driveway handling permits. And I'll make a motion to approve, I'll second.
Gary?
Yes.
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 I think I have some in that folder right there, Gary.
Bruce speaks on this too.
Yep.
I don't really know, they keep showing up. Yeah, that's what I've been hearing too.
Yeah, I think they're growing north right now, they're heading south, from what I understand, sort of the fracking port right now, so.
Hopefully they sense Big Will there, Jake, so I don't say anything.
Alright, item twenty-seven, discussion possible, possible approval blanket purchase orders, make a motion.
I'll second it. Yes.
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 Yeah, he's on. Put a little bit ahead there, so.
Oh, three percent, Jake. Item twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during current and previous months and authorize for the night payment of such purchase, purchase orders.
Hey, at fire department to lighter fire support, invoice dated before P O is nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. This is district two, so we had one receiver that was dated Marshall Auto Parts. This was back in November and December, so one of my invoices, one of the invoices is dated prior to the P O being opened. And then that previous P O was closed out the day the invoice was turned in. Timing thing. District one, see last receiver to Warren Power. Okay, the invoice was received today from Warren Cat, there was an error on this order back in September where their parts department ordered the wrong item. Later we picked up the correct item, however, we did not receive the invoice until today, stating it was past due, therefore the invoice is prior to the P O date. And that is three thousand two hundred and fifty-five oh two. And this is the sheriff's office and it's Verizon Wireless Blanket P O exceeded and service period starts before P O. So the P O was for six thousand, it exceeded six, uh, by five hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents that it was starting for the P O. This is E nine one one, service period date starts before blanket P O date, so it was for some, uh, radio towers, um. So the service period was twelve seven to one seven, and the date of the P O was twelve twenty-three. Highway two, in Mylum, we had a service call on a heater and a P O was never done, that was in December. Burden senior citizens, P O not open when bill was received, so this is their electric bill, they didn't open the P O when the bill was received, so it's not in a timely manner. Burden senior citizens, payroll reimbursement, P O should have been opened in December, it wasn't open until January. Burden senior citizens, smart payroll solutions, new employee and onboarding fee, P O should have been opened in December, it wasn't open until January. Hoping that once we have this purchase order class, all this will go away. Though there will be instances that it won't, but hopefully a lot of it will get fixed.
Did, did you, you did go to the senior citizens meeting?
Yes, and they will be, uh, most of them will be here at the meeting. And we talked to them about, at some point, if we're not doing this right, they have a donation account. They can take it out of their donation account. If they're not willing to, to come to the class and learn it and do it right, I think a lot of it's that they haven't had the training, they don't know, they don't know.
Right.
And Burden has had a lot of changes. So I think once we do this P O class and we get everybody on board, maybe we can cut down, we're not going to, not going to cut this, something's going to happen. But we can cut down a lot of it.
Did Eric show up?
Yes. Yeah, two, two people from Mylum, didn't they, two or three? Yeah, so they showed up, nobody from Burden showed up, nobody from Chig She showed up?
Well, one lady from Burden.
Oh, one lady from Burden, I'm sorry, Pat and Leah did show up. They had some doctor's documents or something. So I make a motion that we approve those. Gary?
Yes.
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 They are all coming to the person.
Yes.
Good deal. Alright, item twenty-nine, discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports. Item thirty, discussion and possible approval of estimate of needs, requests for appropriations and transfer of appropriations. Motion to approve, second.
Yes.
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 The only thing I have to refer to is this is the county. And they're all stapled where they need to be signed, so. You sign, you copy and you then go through them all, so.
Yeah, I'll explain.
Where am I talking to next week? Can't be sure. We do have orders.
Have you ordered the list I used to keep them?
Yes.
It's adjourned.
I'll second that. Ruth?
Yes, thank you.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.